We'll go ahead and get started with this meeting of the Gallatin Municipal. We'll go ahead and get started with this meeting of the Gallatin Municipal Planning Commission Work Session Meeting for Monday, June 5th, 2023. The internet is down, so we're not able to stream this live this evening. We'll go ahead and get started with item number one, which is Sky House Town Homes Final Master Development Plan. Who's presenting this item?
The owner and applicant are requesting approval of an FMDP for seven single-family detached dwellings on 0.67 plus or minus acres located at 656 Chambers Street and two single-family detached dwellings on 0.17 plus or minus acres at 507 Demas Street. Both of these properties are zoned R6. This is actually resubmital from last month. Planning staff had recommended a redesign of the site for both locations, including changing up the driveway access and including the addition of landscaping. Most planning comments were still addressed. I believe we are still waiting on seeing some of the architecture for both of the properties. The comments were pretty minor.
Thank you, Val. Do we have a representative for the applicant present?
Zach Baker with Greenlit Design. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Forward to questions.
I don't have really any questions. I think this addresses the concerns that I had with it at the last meeting. I think to Val's comment, the architecture is going to be the last key piece on this one.
And it'll be submitted as soon as we receive it.
Okay. That's all I've got on it.
Can I answer my questions as well?
Might as well. Well, any other? We'll sit back in three weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is Tennessee Grasslands, an amended preliminary master development plan and revised final master development plan.
I'm filling in for Julian on this item tonight. Tennessee Grasslands is formerly the Fairview Plantation Golf Course. And part of what they're proposing to do is, and they already have approval from the Planning Commission and the City Council for the tennis center portion of their country club site, which is shown on the screen there and on your screen there in front of you and on the screen here on the wall. And so the tennis complex is already an approved development. When they had that plan come through a couple of years ago, they began construction on it. And in the wintertime, they erected a membrane structure at the site that you see here on this aerial photograph. And at that time, they didn't apply for the permit, but it was a temporary type structure, and they have since removed that. And they want to replace this with a more permanent airfield structure, which will be placed over the four tennis courts there. And as part of that, they want to ensure that the structure will comply with the master plan. So the height of the structure would be 35, a maximum of 35 feet. It would be surrounded by a landscape buffer, which is also part of the original plan, but they are intending to enhance that landscape buffer on the north portion of the site to provide more buffer between the single-family homes and the structure. Again, it'll be up to 35 feet in height. This is a rendering of what that structure would look like, and this would be placed to operate at limited times of the year, in just the winter, basically. And then it would be removed in the warmer months. So this is a little bit different than the structure that was placed up there last spring or last, I guess it's in the fall through the spring and has since been removed, but it would comply with a 30-foot high, foot-high height restriction. Other than that, they're going to be removing the structure again in the warmer months and re-erecting it. So they're not coming in for a temporary use permit. They would be coming in for a permanent structure, but it would be reinflated, if you will, is probably the easiest way to describe it, each season to allow for indoor tennis play. So that is the change to the master plan. The footprint of the structure would remain the same, and the height of the structure will be a little bit less than the structure that was placed up there last year. So the applicant is in the audience and will be able to answer some questions.
Yes, the applicant's representative will come forward.
Couple more rendering pictures.
George Welsh with Regan Smith. Yeah, what Bill said was pretty much we're in agreement with. The structure staff that asked us to give us some pictures because the structure was up this past season. So there's a few pictures in the PowerPoint that show the actual structure, not just a rendering. I believe he alluded also to some landscaping enhancements beyond the plan. Those have been already put in place. The structure will not exceed the 35 feet. I believe that was a concern with what was put up this past year, but it has been modified and it will not exceed 35 feet. But we'll happy to answer any other questions. I now have some hard copies of the pictures if you'd like me to pass them out to you.
Sure. Any questions?
Has any of the neighbors seen this? Because that was the biggest issue with the neighbors. They've seen this?
Yes. And we added additional landscaping. I'm Tim Cole from Tennessee Grasslands, by the way. We added additional landscaping on the north side at the request of one of the abutting neighbors on that side. The landscape plan only addressed originally the north and the east, but we've also heavily landscaped the south and the west in addition to adding more landscaping to the north side.
Thank you.
This would, this structure would be up for a total of four months, from the middle of November to the middle of March.
Okay. No, that makes sense. Question I have, there's in the plans that are in here, there's more shown than just the tennis court. So is the tennis court dome the only change that you guys are asking for?
Yes, sir.
And then I do have a question. I actually live in Fairview Plantation, so I walk through there quite a bit. But on the parking lot on the east side where the drive access is, the original plans showed the sidewalk being continued up to the north property line where the parking lot is. And when the, when all that work got done, that sidewalk never got installed. So there's a little bit of a 20-foot gap in the sidewalk system over there.
On Brown's Lane?
On Brown's Lane. So. That's right there where they removed all the landscaping that was in between the columns there. But I guess, Aaron, that'd be my question, if you guys can just make sure as a part of whatever we're approving that we get that done.
Yes, sir. On the east side of Brown's Lane?
East side of Brown's Lane, yeah.
We'll, yeah, we'll check into that.
Okay.
Any other questions? If there ain't none, then we'll sit back in a few weeks. Thank you.
You. Thanks, guys.
Item number three is Cumberland Place North Section, or Phase Five, Section Two, amended preliminary master development plan and revised final master development plan.
So items number three and four, essentially the same thing. Would you like to combine those?
Yes, please.
Val Martinez, Planning Staff. The owner and applicant are requesting approval of an amended PMDP and revised FMDP for Cumberland Place North, Phase Five, Sections Two and Three. This amendment would remove previously approved greenway easement. Planning staff did have some concerns regarding the removal and exactly where the relocation or what the alternative to this removal would be. This image right here shows Section Two. And Section Three is just adjacent to this, to the north side.
Thank you, Val. Do we have a representative for the applicant present?
Zach Baker, Greenlit Design. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Yeah, I got a first one is why do they want to remove the greenway easement?
The homeowners do not want the foot traffic in the back of their lot.
They shouldn't have bought a lot with a greenway easement on it.
I remember this property well. It was the very first, first item when I served on Planning Commission that came before us. And Mr. Wilson remembers this, we were here till 11 o'clock at night. That greenway was originally supposed to go up through the watershed area, through the wooded area, and tie into the property to the north of it and follow kind of a wooded area. And it was asked at the time, the applicant made a request to move that because it would be too expensive to build it on that uneven slope, and they moved it to the eastern and southern boundary, you know, along the wastewater treatment plant. And we all had concerns at the time that someday in the future, they would come back and ask for that to be removed. And this is that someday in the future. There's no reason to have that removed. And if it is removed, then you've eliminated any continuity of the greenway trail system from Gallatin down to the trails at Lockfall Park, which is a real asset for our county, our area.
Yeah, I mean, it's akin to, you know, somebody buys a, you know, buys a house across the street from a rock quarry and then wants the rock quarry to shut down because they don't like that there's a rock quarry across the street. I mean, so, no, I don't, I mean, the purpose is to get feedback, and I'd say there's no way I'm going to support taking that off.
Any other feedback?
I mean, the only way that I would consider it is if they had an alternate route picked out that they were planning on putting in, and that it was a condition of approval, that it would go in. They don't have one.
Or if they would put it in.
They just want to eliminate it.
Yeah. But that undoes everything that has been done over the last 15 years of trying to get the greenway trail system. So, I mean, and to John's point, that was the concern all the way back then. So it doesn't make any sense.
I think if you're looking for feedback, text to your client. That's pretty clear.
I think I got it. Yep. Thank you.
That was three and four combined, correct?
Right.
Item number five is Seven Brew Coffee Preliminary Master Development Plan.
Plan, Planning Staff. This is a preliminary master development plan for Seven Brew Coffee on 1.89 acres, zoned PGC, planned general commercial district, located south of Nashville Pike and east of Blue Jay Way. As you can see in this image, there's considerable floodplain on this property, and the applicant will need to do a conditional letter of map amendment, and will need to elevate the building at least one foot above base flood elevation. And then the biggest, the other biggest comments were just some missing drawings. There's no photometric plan, signed package, looking for a conceptual landscaping plan. We've asked for all of that with the resubmital, as well as architectural elevations, which are of a location in Memphis. So we've asked for them to be updated with Gallatin-specific architecture.
Do we have a representative for the applicant present?
The architecture is submitted. I know it says Memphis, but that's what we're intending on using. We verified that with the client. That's a brick, brick-clad structure, which is higher quality, so that's what we plan to use. One of the questions in the comments was, does the front of the building face Nashville Pike? And it does. That's the orientation. We did, in the comments, there were two conflicting things. One of the things we talked about, and this is going to be a little technical, Aaron, I'm going to kind of look at you. But we had talked about doing a ClomRF on this. Essentially, if we got an approved site plan, we would come back and, because we're doing offset compensation here, we would do a, we would do the fill and then just verify the fill, the final line of the fill versus doing a conditional letter of map provision and a letter of map provision. That process, the difference between those two processes is about $40,000 and about two years' worth of time. We wanted to use the simpler one, which is what we talked about on the pre-application meeting with Bill and everybody else. So that's essentially just a process where you place the fill. Engineering has looked at it, reviewed it, signed off on it, and then you come back with FEMA just to revise the floodplain, the floodplain area. And we're doing offset compensation, so it's not going to take away any volume. But just to be clear. And we'll address that with engineering as we resubmit and as we resubmit on the comments. We'll clarify all that.
I'm not familiar with offset compensation.
Offset compensation is really just where you're in a floodplain. So what you do is if you take away storage within the floodplain where water would back up, then you replace that storage by digging back out in another area. Just make sure you don't take away any floodplain volume.
The property immediately to the, this is on the corner down there by the park, isn't it?
Yeah, the driver's testing station's next door to it.
Right across the street from the shopping center, it's got Marco's Pizza in it. And the drive on this lines up across from that drive that goes into that center that's Marco's.
Great use for the site.
It is.
I just out of curiosity, are y'all providing compensation in the park? Are you providing compensation in the park?
What we're doing is we're grading across the park to go underneath the drive and get out to the lake just so we can drain out that low point. Where our compensation is on the site.
Okay.
We just have to get a little bit lower to make that happen. Yep.
My questions were all floodplain-related, so you may answer those.
Any other questions?
Maybe we'll get somebody to move into the Marco's spot, too.
Yeah, we'd like that.
Well, if there are no others, then looks good. We'll sit back in a few weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number six is Foxland Harbor Marina, an amended preliminary master development plan.
This next, this next item is a request to amend the Foxland Master Development Plan to include proposed marina, the northwest portion of it, adjacent to Douglas Bend Road. It will be located south and east of the intersection of Douglas Bend Road and Nashville Pike. The photograph shows you the property that is currently zoned MRO. And MRO zoning requires approval, of course, of a master plan, and actually is a conditional use, which can be approved through an amendment through the master plan. The applicant's proposal also includes leasing the area of the Corps of Engineers property, which we have some discussion still as to whether, what process needs to be done there and in conjunction with other properties, the core properties and these properties as to whether or not a conditional use is required by the Board of Zoning Appeals because of what's depicted on our zoning map. The property, as you see there, is shown in green on the cover sheet of the plan that was submitted to us. The red dotted line on that screen is the city limits, and the marina project will be constructed partially in the city limits and partially out of the city limits, which may require us to do an annexation of part of the core property, which is, again, part of the questions that we have, legal questions that we have of the core and what track that we should be following. The zoning line that you see here indicate R20 zoning on core property. This is the only area in the city, for some reason or another, that identifies the core property with the city zoning. Every other property in the city that's in the core reservation boundary is not designated with zoning, and we have not applied zoning restrictions in that area. So this is something that we're going to be discussing as to the validity of our zoning ordinance, zoning, establishing zoning on core property. We'll have more information as to the course that we would follow as far as plan development of that portion, the R20 zoning. But what we're talking about is the, let me make sure I got the right, there we go. Yeah. Is the, just that portion that has the zoning, actually it's MRO, and then there's a little bit of blue here. U and split zoning. And the old Douglas Bend right-of-way goes through the middle and is currently about where the dividing line between the two zoning districts is located. And so they are going to want to amend their master plan to include those two portions as part for this marina activity. And moving along, now what we're looking at here, keep in mind that north now is on the left side of the screen. East is basically on the north side, the top side of the screen, not north side, but the top of the screen. And they intend to use the MRO, MU portions of the property, of their amended property, to construct a small marina building and parking spaces and a drive aisle. They will also be leasing or using the existing boat ramp, but retaining that boat ramp, and it'll be available for public use. I believe it's the arrangement they're proposing there where it's located now, across from the, I think it's twice daily now. It used to be sudden service. So that will be retained, and they are proposing to reopen the old Douglas Bend Road as a driveway to serve their site. And the marina would be constructed again on core property, and zoning or the zoning and/or city boundary line basically extends right from, well, right, there we go, in the northeasterly direction, parallel with 800 feet, parallel off of Highway 31. So all of this portion is in the city and has an R20 zoning designation on it, at least. That's what it shows on our maps. We can't find an ordinance from way back when, when the property, shortly after the property was annexed or simultaneously with the annexation of the property, establishing R20, but it shows up on our maps. And on the records back in those days, we're sketchy at best sometimes. And again, we're trying to discover what the proper process is, if we need to remove that from the map because of jurisdictional restrictions or not. So we'll have an answer by the time we get back to the Planning Commission for this. But then, of course, the southeasterly portion, this area right in here, I'll say, that's over the water, of course, in the core boundary, is not in the city limits. And quite likely, eventually, they will approach the city about annexing that if necessary. So this amendment focuses just on changing the Foxland master plan from what y'all had seen before, as it doesn't really affect so much, get the right pointer. Okay, this one will work, that the additional condominium buildings that were approved last year are located along this portion of the property. That's not affected. It's the area to the north of there. Now, they had intended to use this as a marina all along. It was never a part of the formal approval of the plan, but it has been shown in different iterations that were not formally adopted as part of the plan, but this was that opportunity to do that. So that's what they're going to be proposing, and I don't know how many slips that they're talking about at this point. That's something I don't have the information on. I think it may even be in the plan. But there is a 3,800-square-foot marina building that they're looking to do, and they're also one of three different sites that is being considered for a marina, additional marina on Old Hickory Lake. Wanting to make sure all of their zoning is in order while they make that application.
Thank you, Bill. Do we have a representative for the applicant present?
Matt Huff with Gamble Design Collaborative. That was a pretty thorough presentation. I will say that, just to simplify it a bit, the main thing we're asking for here is that the, is for a conditional use for marina. That's pretty much it. We're updating the original approved FMDP or PMDP, and we'll update the FMDP as well. So, yeah, and we've, we also received the comments, and we agree with the planning comments that we've received to this point. I think there's more comments to come for us, but we will, we will definitely make all the changes we've seen here. So we're here to answer any questions if you've got them.
Forward questions?
The Corps is open to do this?
Yes. So this is, the Corps actually put out a notice of availability to lease on three different properties that they own, and they're going to select, there's a submittal in August, and then after that, they're going to select one of the properties to move forward with for a potential marina. And this is one of them.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't have a problem. This has been part of the Foxland plan, goodness, ever since it was first developed. So it's been something a lot of people have been wanting to see. So I don't, I don't have any problem with that at all.
How long would the process take?
That's tough to say. We'd be relying on the Corps a little bit there, but we did, we've got an idea. Once, once the Corps approves one, I think you had an idea.
Yeah, I have to begin construction within 180 days of approval by the Corps. There's a two-phase application process. If you're selected after phase one, you move into phase two. So approval would come sometime in 2024.
Thank you.
Well, we're all hoping for your success on that selection process. This will be a big thing for Gallatin.
Thank you.
Looks good. Thank you. See you back in a few weeks if there are no other questions.
Exciting.
Thank you. Item number seven is Mallard Industrial Park.
Let me advance here to the Mallard Industrial Park. Mallard Industrial Park comprises this property that's located south of Long Hallup Pike, west of Highway 109, which is, of course, the, there we go, 109, south of Long Hallup Pike, east of Belvedere Drive, and north of the CSX Railroad. Most of you know that this property has been used for agricultural purposes for a while, and similar to the Teal Drive Industrial Park, they intend to redevelop this property or develop this property for industrial purposes, and it's been zoned industrial for quite a long time. Kind of layout of the property, it's in two different drainage basins, and they will be addressing that with the design of their project. They're proposing five large industrial buildings, warehouse-type buildings. Again, it's zoned IR, industrial restrictive. They would be gaining access from two streets or driveways to and from Belvedere Drive. And at this point, we are not sure exactly what potential impact there would be from the realignment and widening of Highway 174, which is Long Hallup Pike, in conjunction with the extension and widening of Vietnam Vets Boulevard. That would occur in the north portion, in this area here. So there could be some impacts in this area. This is kind of a low area here as it is now, and that would be used for drainage, primarily including pass-through drainage from overflow from the creek as well as outfall flow from this site towards the creek area itself. So they would have five buildings. Again, it'd be more like a campus style, but it would have a lot of truck bays and have access for the backing in those areas. Now, keep in mind, if you may remember, the 386 conceptual plan show a cul-de-sac being constructed on Belvedere Drive. So coordinating this project in possibly multiple phases would have to make insurance that there is not a traffic issue, particularly on Belvedere Drive at 386 until such time that that new roadway can be, can be constructed. Once that new roadway is constructed, Belvedere Drive, as I said, would be a cul-de-sac. Once that new roadway is constructed, Belvedere Drive, as I said, would be a cul-de-sac on the north end, so all traffic to and from this area would come in from the south on Belvedere Drive, no access to Long Hallup Pike or, of course, from Highway one oh nine. So what we really need in engineering, maybe Aaron can chime in on this, is a traffic circulation plan, not only a traffic study, but a traffic circulation plan to see how they're going to route all of their industrial traffic, truck traffic. So that's the one building there. They'll have similar buildings elsewhere around the site and it'll be lined with landscaping buffer and retention basins and water collar basins in between. Again, the main driveways are to and from Belvedere Drive. There, where, if you're more familiar with it, there is a expanded mini warehouse facility on the property here to the south, so their main drive would come in in that strip there that's between the two businesses. There's the overall layout of the plan with the drainage system, the conceptual drainage system. And of course, this is going to be a major plan, but it is just a site plan. The landscape buffers will be added around the perimeter of the site with the exception of, at this point, we're not real sure about the north end because of the potential realignment of the roadway. The structures will be the tilt-up panels, similar to what we've seen in other large industrial buildings, that will have, of course, an office in those areas, so there'll be some alternative architecture that we'll be reviewing here and then truck bays on the backsides of the buildings. There's rendering what the building will look like with the corner office site. And let me go back to, let's see, that one there was probably a good one. So, now that's made a little too busy. Let's get to another one here. Okay, for this one, what you see, this is the southerly portion that's closer to the railroad tracks. The buildings will have the truck bays on the interior side, so you won't see it from Highway one oh nine and they'll have their standard parking spaces facing one oh nine. Let's see, this slide here has the truck bays on the backside facing the one oh nine entrance ramp on, from Long Hallup Pike onto Highway one oh nine, southbound, so you will see those at that point. And then same thing here, truck bays will be located where they can be visible from Long Hallup Pike. Now, keep in mind, they do have that landscape buffer that they're going to be putting around the perimeter of the site. So that's all I have to present at this time, so I believe the applicants and the audience can discuss more in detail.
Thank you. If we have a representative for the applicant, please step forward.
Zach Baker with Greenland Design, happy to answer any questions you might have.
Well, my question is for engineering, and I'm beating a dead horse here, but has T-Dot made any indication that they are willing to take some action to preserve the right of way on the southwest corner of the intersection of one oh nine and Long Hall, three eighty-six, if for necessary improvements to that interchange?
So we've sent this plan to T-Dot and have a meeting scheduled within this coming Friday to discuss what they think that this needs to be offset as well as any traffic impacts until Belvedere is disconnected from Long Hallup Pike.
Right.
So we've got a meeting scheduled.
Something I'm going to want to see for this is when Belvedere is disconnected from Long Hallup Pike, where's all this truck traffic going? You know, because this makes a lot of sense with that connection into Long Hallup and getting truck traffic out to three eighty-six, but if all that traffic's got to go back to Nashville Pike or somewhere else, then this is a pretty intense industrial use from a traffic standpoint that may wind up in a very bad place.
Yeah, I can definitely understand that. I spoke with Aaron earlier and I plan on having a meeting with him to discuss that and then also plan on being in attendance for the meeting Friday with T-Dot.
Okay. Yeah, because I mean, that, that whole road through there is already a kind of, not a traffic nightmare, but it's, it's a tough road to get in off of on if you're trying to come out of, you know, where the Walmart is and the county government building, just those, those traffic movements are already challenging and if we put a bunch of truck traffic and force it from there to Nashville Pike, it could be ugly, so.
That's a really good point. Y'all aren't, y'all aren't going to come back and request a ride-in or ride-out on Long Hallup, are you?
At this point, no.
Well, probably at no point, but yeah. But, but even, even with where it is on Belvedere now, if that turns into a cul-de-sac, how's that traffic getting to three eighty-six and getting out of there?
Very good point.
Or to one oh nine, either way.
If I remember correctly, the T-Dot plan has Long Hallup Pike, there'll be an overpass over three eighty-six and then Long Hallup Pike extends to Nashville Pike and Belvedere ends up tying into Long Hallup Pike.
And if that's the case, then that's probably.
That's, that's correct. I don't know what. Basically, what would happen is, is to get back to three eighty-six, the trucks would not, I, if, I was guessing, the trucks would not make it back to Nashville Pike, they would take a right on the Long Hallup to go back to the overpass at three eighty-six.
Okay. Yeah, I guess it'd just, it'd be good to see kind of a bigger picture of the area and how that traffic flow could be impacted, just to make sure we understand it.
Sure. That would be my guess.
Any other questions or feedback?
I'd be concerned about seeing the traffic flow and how you're going to do the roadways. I'm sure it's to be done in phases, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thinking of them, we'll see it back in a few weeks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number eight is eleven thirteen Spencer Avenue Garage Site Plan.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jim Carpenter, Staff Planner. The owner and applicant requests approval of a site plan with alternative architecture for a five hundred and seventy-six square foot detached accessory garage located at eleven fifteen, or eleven thirteen Spencer Avenue, zoned R fifteen, medium density residential. It's just a metal building on all four sides, very similar to other things we have seen in terms of detached accessory structures.
Thank you, Jim. Do we have a representative for the applicant or the applicant themselves?
My first time doing anything like this, so I'm really nervous. I'll let you all just ask me questions if that's okay.
Did staff, I'm sure staff explained to you why this process is in place.
Yes, absolutely. Because we understand that in order to build a garage in the city limits, it has to be siding or brick. And so that's what we had someone come in and give us an estimate for and it was upwards, over sixty thousand dollars. So we kind of dropped back and punted and looked at a really nice metal type style garage by the barn store. It's not going to be a janky little shed by any means. It's just going to be within our budget and, and within the other outbuildings, so to speak, in our neighborhood.
And that's going to be the question that we'll ask, is that there's other buildings of the similar type in the neighborhood already?
Yes.
That also don't match the primary house, so.
Well, it will eventually match because we're going to do white with black trim and then we're going to paint the house white and also do it in black trim. It's a house that we inherited and it needs a lot of love and so we're trying to love it. So that's our plan.
What color will the roof be?
The roof is new, actually. We just had that done a year or so ago and it's a.
No, I'm sorry. I meant on the shed.
Oh, of the, I'm sorry, of the building, it will be black.
Okay. And that's, that's one of the questions is that we're asking with these accessory structures is rather than just a galvanized roof or a metal roof that really glares, some type of colored roof or?
No, it'll be, it'll be black and the trim on the building, it'll all be cohesive and match very well. I'm kind of a matchy-matchy girl.
I don't think you're going to have any problems.
Okay.
So this is going to be a two-car garage, is that what it is?
Yes, ma'am.
Ma'am, can you just state your name for the record, please?
Melissa Bentley.
Do y'all have any other questions for Ms. Bentley? I don't think it'd be a problem. We'll see you back in a few weeks. Thank you. Item number nine is Tompkins Edition Resubdivision of Lots Ten, Eleven and Twelve.
Emily Lang, Planning Staff. The owner and applicant requests approval to resubdivide three lots into four residential lots totaling point seven nine acres, zoned R six, high-density residential district located at two eighteen Southwestland Avenue. The biggest comment was that the resubdivided lots are shown without the required ten-foot side easement in this drawing, so they will either need to be added back in or will need to request a variance to, for no side easements. And then other comments were pretty minimal.
Thank you, Emily. Do we have a representative for the applicant present?
Michael Barnes, and I'm the owner-applicant and pretty much got the markup final plat here and we're in the process of adding all this in. We will be putting the easement on the side setbacks, so everything on the markup will be added to the plat.
The, the plan is real small scale. I'm trying to zoom in and see what, what is this, this square box in the middle of Lot One and Two and Three and Four that?
Shared driveways.
Driveway.
Driveways.
That, it almost looks like a building structure divided by the property line, that's a shared driveway?
Yeah, it's just the, it's an easement line. So it, the easement, it's a sixteen-foot easement that splits the property line.
I'm at that, Matt.
That's an, that's an arrow.
I don't.
Oh, that's an arrow, not a line. Okay, I understand.
It says sixteen foot, it's showing the, just showing the width of the shared driveway.
I understand.
When you do those driveways, are you going to be able to lay them out in such a way that each homeowner can, can back out and so they can drive back out onto Southwestland Avenue instead of having to back onto the road? Is that how you're going to lay it out?
Yes, sir. We'll be submitting a site plan and for approval when we pull the permits and they'll have a backout spot.
And Emily, this has already got, it's already in the correct zoning for this one. It's not, there's no variances in this then. Okay. I don't have any problems with it.
Any other questions?
Where exactly is this?
By the hospital, I think.
It's on Westland, just south, there, there we go.
Right next to the helipad.
Southwest of the Food Line Shopping Center. There's the helipad you see on the right there on the screen, which is for the hospital and so it's just across Westland from that.
Well, if there are no other questions, then we'll see it back in a few weeks. Thank you. Item number ten is Chandler Park, Phase Two Resubdivision of Lot One Final Plat.
Mr. Chairman, Jim Carpenter, Staff Planner. The owner and applicant requests approval of a final plat for a resubdivision of Lot One of the Chandler Park subdivision containing four lots and a joint access easement on forty-two point four acres, zoned MU, McUeze Zone District and PGC, Planned General Commercial Zone District, located at the northeast corner of Harris Lane and Greenlee Boulevard. The final plat is consistent with the preliminary plat, however, there are some stormwater comments that we probably do need to talk about.
Do we have a representative for the applicant present?
My name is Logan Conley. I'm with Arnold Consulting Engineering, the surveyors doing the plat. I know one of the main comments that I received back from, from you all was about address, addressing. I've already coordinated with E nine one one about those. They were listed on Sheet Two of the plat and I can add that to the face of the plat so it'll be more apparent.
What were the, staff mentioned that some discussion needs to be had about the stormwater concerns?
We are not showing any stormwater infrastructure easements at this time. I believe the comment proposed doing Lot One and Two at a later date, but that would, I would just have to talk with them about that, about, and I would have talked with the design team about what is the desired route for that.
Aaron, is that just easements along the property line or is that dedicated to actual infrastructure?
A little bit of both. So if, if memory serves, some of the notes are talking about how stormwater, water quality would be handled by certain lots on here and apparently I don't believe any of that is shown. Also wanted to kind of clean up a little bit of the lot numbering because Lot Two, there's essentially two Lot Twos on, on this. And in the notes of talking about what stormwater was to be handled with, with which, it kind of seemed a little like, just in a couple of different spots, so just cleaning up on that and.
Needs clarity, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but then, yeah, but until you have an actual development plan for Lot One, you can't do all the stormwater if you don't know what it is yet.
We've got, I believe, Lot One and Lot Four shown on this plan. We've got the, the site plans for those, but it's Lot Three and Lot Two that don't.
Okay.
So what is the next steps for, that you would like me to do about getting those easements taken care of? So I can go back with the design team and get that figured out?
Sure. So one of the suggestions that we had was just to plat the Lot One and Lot Four, which could be, could potentially become Lot Five if, if the two that's shown on, on this, this plat is changed to three and Lot Three to four, and then do Lots Two and Three at a later date until we get a site plan for, for those and then coordinate with our, our stormwater folks, Lance and Ryan, on what they need to see as far as stormwater easements.
Okay. I believe we had a conversation in the site plan in the past on this property. Why does Lot One have that, I don't know, you call it a peninsula, that, that dog leg to the property line that juts out?
I believe that is where the entrance to Lot One is going to be and I would have to coordinate with the site plan and get further clarification on that. I don't remember off the top of my head, I'm sorry.
Is, is the site plan for Lot One subject to change?
No, they are in the permitting process right now. They've actually already got addresses for the different apartment units and everything, so it's pretty well set in stone.
I didn't know if you, you needed to go ahead and record this so that you can start on the other lots or not, but.
Well, the, the main reason for this plat is Lot Four is already in the process and Lot One is pretty much, like I said, set in stone.
Okay.
I thought all five lots were using shared stormwater at the eastern, I guess that would be, eastern, is, is the right-hand side of the page east?
North.
North, okay, yeah, the northern end of Lot One.
I believe. Already constructed?
Oh, I don't know if it's already constructed, but it was supposed to be shared between all five lots, I mean.
That is correct.
For water quantity.
They, there is a detention pond on Lot One that will handle, that will handle the detention as well as the, or that will handle the water quality for Lot One. The other lots will have to do their own water quality.
Okay.
But quantity will be handled by Lot One. Okay. So you're talking, I mean, can't the water quality be handled on Lots Two, Three, Four and Five with permeable pavers or some other method other than a bio-retention area?
Could be, yes.
Would that be suitable if?
They're going to have to determine that during their design.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't believe there is any design for Lot Two and Three at the moment. It's just One and Four.
Questions?
Yes, sir.
All right, we'll see it back in a few weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Item number eleven is Twin Eagles, Phase Fifteen, Section A Final Plat.
The owner and applicant requests approval of a final plat for Twin Eagles, Phase Fifteen, Section A, consisting of twenty-three single-family lots, one private tract, two public rights-of-way and a open space tract on sixteen point eighteen acres, zoned MU, McUeze, located west of Beacon Street and north of Wildcat Run. Staff had mostly minor comments on this plat.
And do we have a representative for the applicant present? And do we have a representative for the applicant present?
Zach Baker with Greenland Design. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Is it substantially the same as what was already approved for the preliminaries? Okay. That's what it looked like. I don't have any questions on this one.
When is the road completed over to?
I don't know.
When is it?
Another, I think, 62 lots after this.
62 after this section? Okay. Any questions?
No, sir.
See it back in a few weeks. Thank you. And then our last item is, well, last-listed items, Nexus, item number 12, Nexus TN, Phase 1, North, Section 4, Final Plat.
Tom Martinez, Planning Staff. The owner and applicant are requesting approval of a final plat for Nexus Tennessee, Phase 1, North, Section 4, on 27.65 plus or minus acres, zoned R8 PRD. This plat would create 107 single-family residential lots and four open-space tracts. Planning staff had pretty minor comments for this one.
Thank you, Val. Do we have a representative for the applicant present?
This is consistent with previous documents you've seen for this section of Nexus, just here to answer any questions.
Open the floor to questions.
Please, please, forward.
Seeing none, we'll see it back in a few weeks. Thanks, Jim. Bill, do we have any other business to discuss?
No, sir, we don't, although I would like to poll the members on their availability for the next couple of meetings. I know we had discussed that before, and we want to make sure that we are able to inform people if there's not going to be a quorum here, of course, that's important. So, if you know your availability for the June meeting and/or the July work session, if you can let us know that.
I will not be here for the June 26 meeting.
Okay.
I will be absent at both of those.
You're gone for both of them?
Yeah, there's a slim chance I might make the, the work session, but I wouldn't count on it.
What's the date on the July?
Third.
Third?
Between the weekend and 4th July, so it's kind of sandwiched in there.
The June 26 is the agenda meeting, and July 3 is the work session.
I won't be here on the 26th, but I'll be here on the 3rd.
I'll be here on the 3rd.
And, I'm sorry, Mayor, I didn't, I didn't hear which day.
I won't be here on the 26th, but I will be here on the 3rd.
Okay.
You'll be down three. Be down three members for the voting meeting.
I'll be here for both. Mr. Wilson, you'll be here for both?
I should be here for both.
I should be here for both.
I should be here.
So, we're going to have four people for the June meeting and possibly, what was it, at least six for the work session.
Just my opinion, but I think there's only one thing that probably is going to be really hard to, you know. I don't think it's going to be a crazy meeting, and it's going to be terrible that we're not there.
Okay. Well, I just want to be able to tell the folks in case.
Yeah, I think that's fair.
Okay, I'll ask what may be an ignorant question. Do you have to have a quorum for a work session?
No. No, because you're not voting.
That's what I thought, but.
I spent on anything.
Yeah, so, so June's not a problem, even if one person's sick or out or?
On June.
July is not a problem.
July, man, yeah, you're right. Okay. Thank you, good. Any announcements? Oh, sir. All right. See you back in a few weeks.
Thanks, everybody.